Okay, we're gonna bring this meeting to order. Call this meeting to order at 7:04 PM. We're gonna stand up and say the side of illusions and then clear.
Applied to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Father, please bless us as we do this meeting and make us, have us make right decisions for this community and take care of us during the holiday seasons. Amen. Okay, roll call. Okay. Sherri, here. Leslie. Lori, here. Melissa?
Here.
Phyllis? Here. Okay, approval of the agenda? A motion?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda as written.
Second motion? Second is... Who's second?
Lori.
Lori. Okay, I couldn't tell if it was you or... Okay. The minutes from the last meeting, the correction on the top should be instead of January 21st, it should be November 17th. Um, 'cause they were last month's meeting. I put December, but it's November. Okay.
I make a motion that we approve the village meeting minutes with the date change to November 17th, 2016, as written.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I forgot to do that on the agenda. All in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye. Okay, there's no audience business. Okay. Number two, discussion on private road ordinance. This was brought up at the village council meeting on Monday. Um, they're having a little difficulty with a private road where the people want it to become a public road so they can be plowed and they can, they want an assessment put on their property so that everybody has to pay for the private road. Anyways, there's a lot of hassle coming up about private roads and Mike found out that we're not supposed to even be allowing private roads. So, I have contacted Rand Bowman and he is going to make an amendment. If it's okay, this is a suggestion. I've contacted him to see if he would do it. Um, amend our ordinance 19, private road ordinance, to no longer allow private roads in the village.
Well, why aren't they allowed?
I don't know the whole story to that, but I will get that. I didn't want to interrupt the meeting and get everything explained to me. But, um, look, Addison Township doesn't, well, nobody allows them.
I think they're a problem, you know, just because there's people who don't want to pay to maintain them and then there's people who do.
So the news...
And I think it creates problems, but I had heard that, was it at the meeting that you and I went to, you know, the one that we did in Oakland County, that we had heard that that was becoming a new thing where they were actually, the county was wanting to relinquish some of their responsibility in taking care of some of the roads? And I thought that was a new thing that they were going to, was actually more private roads? And I was kind of mortified by the thought of it.
Oh.
'Cause I think that that's just a problem, you know?
Right, yeah. Well, and we have three private roads. We have Rosie Drive, Frederick, and Porter. Now Porter Lane was the first one and it was approved as it is and it's just a little two tracker.
It's a dirt road.
They have a very rough road. It's, it's, I mean, I don't even know if it could be fixed because of easements and everything.
Well, I know my, the Andersons live down there and that Natalie and the girls were really good friends and that was all through high school, there were so many times. I remember once going down there and I didn't want to open my car doors 'cause the water in that road was so high. I mean, it was like...
It did come up.
Right.
And that's all just part of a bigger issue with the Leonard drain not draining through. It stops and backs up 'cause it actually is so much silt, it goes uphill.
Mm-hmm.
It stops in the middle of Farmer John's Field, just between, you know, uh, my neighbor's house.
Mm-hmm.
And just, you know, it all kind of backs up and that's what it does, it pushes back.
Just pushes right on?
Right.
Now yours is not too bad.
Ours is up to code, yeah.
Yeah, yours is up to code and so is Rosie.
Rosie would be.
But, um...
Right, it's paved.
I, I take it you guys are not having any problems down there with people paying and...
We, there, there's one resident who, two residents have backhoes.
Mm-hmm.
So, one resident does it all the time, the other resident just does his own driveway. So, we don't have, you know, much of an issue, but if that person moves, which he's considering, uh, I'd be like looking to find out what happens with the other private road and, you know?
Mm-hmm.
'Cause I do live on the private road and we do take care of it, but...
Yeah. And see, up there, apparently nobody, um, certain people will pay their membership dues, other people will not. Um, and then, um, I think Rosie still owns part of it and he doesn't, it's just a must. They have had nothing but trouble up there. How many people live on Porter Lane?
Four families.
Oh, no, 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 there's more. On Porter Lane?
Porter Lane.
Oh, Porter Lane?
I think there's four families.
One, two, three, four.
Four, I think.
Yeah, four, yeah, 'cause you got the people, the older people in the back.
Mm-hmm.
Judy and John.
The Andersons.
The Andersons and then the guy across the street. Yep, four.
Well, I'm sure Southern East back there too, on the one side?
Uh-uh.
Am I thinking of Gerst?
Gerst.
Oh, okay.
Mm-hmm. Yep, Gerst. Yeah. Okay. So anyways, um, I contacted Rand Bowman, I sent him an email and asked him if he would consider this and how much he would charge us to do it.
Did he have an opinion on it?
He's, he didn't give me any kind of an opinion. He just said he will look into it and get back with me.
Okay.
So, um, do we want to table this until we get more information?
Well, yeah, so all the maps have to be updated again. All maps will...
Well, no, no, because we're gonna keep all the port, no, we're gonna keep all, there'll still be a private drive.
Okay.
Rosie will.
Okay.
They will just charge a, an assessment on each of their taxes so that then they will have to pay 'cause it's on their taxes.
So who will be in charge of, the village itself will collect this assessment?
Oh, it would have to be collected by the township and I don't know why. That's another thing I didn't understand.
Are they in the village limit?
Yeah.
Yeah, they probably pay the road commission out of their budget.
Right, the people on Porter, they have not maintained it for so long. I'm sure that the minute that they start paying into it, they would like to collect and have some maintenance done on the road so for them it'd be beneficial.
Well, this would just be an assessment up there. It wouldn't go on these other roads.
Okay.
And then, once they do the amendment to the ordinance, then we would no longer allow a private road. It would have to be code.
But they would be grandfathered in.
They would be grandfathered.
Two that are already, or three that are there unless, how would you go about telling this one that they have to do this but not the other two?
Well, we don't, they are coming to us to do it. We're not making them.
Everybody on the road?
Well, that's, they're gonna have to have a meeting. Yes, there's gonna have to be a meeting.
Yeah, 'cause it seems that everybody would have a vote.
Yes, yes. So, and, you know, unanimously would win.
Yeah.
Um, that's gonna have to be done amongst them.
Okay.
But, um, we will, Mike did make the statement that we cannot incorporate all of them in, to the village because Porter Drive is not even, it's not even a road.
It's a two tracker.
Mm-hmm. So, I mean...
Well, if Frederick Lane was up to code, it should be probably included in that same thing.
Into, into an assessment?
Possibly. There's only, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, I think there's seven houses.
But do you guys have an association?
Loose. I don't, I think it might exist in charter, but it's not, it's not...
See, that's the problem up there too. But they don't have anybody that plows their driveway and stuff.
Mm-hmm.
So, um...
You know, I don't think there's an association. It just was a, a subdivision, I guess.
Mm-hmm.
I'd have to go to, the person who was in charge of it has died. So...
Okay.
Mrs. Frederick, Frederick Fisher died.
Okay.
About two months ago. So, um, we have to find out from her son what happens to...
The association or the subdivision association or whatever, yeah.
There was, I mean, if there's an association, you're supposed to have a...
Annual, or a meeting?
Yeah, and there's not, there's not, that...
Mm-hmm. And you're supposed to, like, um, in an association, in a subdivision, you have an annual meeting and you have to pay annual dues.
Yeah, there's no, there's no association. In the 11 years I've been there, we just pay Kurt Fisher as a courtesy to do the, to do the drive.
Okay.
To do the street.
So, I mean, it's an option, if it goes through up there, it's an option for you guys. We'll have to see what happens with Rosie, you know?
Is it the, maybe I'll talk to all seven people and see what they think. Do you know what the village special assessment will be?
This is just in the beginning stages.
Because in our, in our manual, there is a formula and, uh, we've been told that, uh, we're not included in the formula when they do the calculations, so...
Right, because they're private road.
Right, there's an actual page that has the...
Yes, in the master plan.
Right.
Yes. No, we don't get paid for those roads.
Mm-hmm.
Right, but if we pass the board...
Yeah, include those seven houses.
No, I think you do get garbage pickup, don't you?
We get garbage pickup.
Yes, that's the only thing they do get is garbage pickup.
Rosie Drive does?
Yep. Yep. They pick up...
No, Frederick Lane does.
So does Rosie.
Okay.
Yeah, they got restricted.
So, they already pay an assessment for that, right? Or they pay taxes?
We pay our taxes just like you do.
Yes. They're, they pay the taxes just like we do. But being as it's a private road, the village is not responsible for plowing it, salting it, keeping it from, like, putting asphalt, you know, down or anything like that.
If they were a public road, then we would have to start to do that.
We would have to salt, we would have to plow, we would have to fix it if they got holes. Um, but there's just no way that that can happen on Porter Lane. So, I mean, if, if they happen to incorporate these other roads into the village, which I don't see that happening, there's no way they can do that with Porter Lane and those people are not gonna sit back. So, it's just gonna be, it's gonna, it's just in the beginning stages, but Mike just wants to make sure that we do not have any more of them because we're running into trouble. So, 'cause Porter Lane has been a lot of trouble for a lot of years.
Well, it creates an exception for the village.
Yes.
You know?
So...
And it's, it's a lost revenue as well.
Yes. So, um, we're gonna table till we hear from Rand. So that'll probably be, I would think that's gonna be next month. I'm, I'm thinking that it will be. I'm not sure with the holidays and everything, but hopefully next month they'll get back with me. Okay, we're back at the master plan. Um, I'm sorry I did not, I was gonna, um, scan those corrections and get them to you and, um, I just, with my aunt dying and everything, I haven't done anything.
I did not do my homework.
No. So, anyways, um, I'm, I'm still working on it. Um, we gotta get this done. As soon as the holidays are done, I'm getting on it full force. So, and then I will scan this and everybody can go in and correct the pages that need to be corrected. Okay?
Need some help after the holidays getting those scanned in. Let me know if you have okay?
All right, super, thank you. So, we're just gonna go over the maps tonight again. And see, one, um, one person wanna have the corrected version so you can all, like, check them and have a fresh eyes look at them. These are the things that I changed. Okay.
So, Rosie, uh, Rosie Drive and Rosie Court on map one are on there now.
Yep.
And the lines are completed.
Oh, yeah, okay.
The road comes down and, uh, this property that's between Rosie subdivision to the right, I split that like Melissa had said that there's a line there.
Mm-hmm.
And then, uh, Frederick Lane is spelled out instead of private road and Porter Lane is spelled out. The way they're designated as, uh, private roads now is that they are dotted.
Okay.
The three different roads, these two were all dotted originally, this one was not 'cause I picked it up from this map, so I dotted it.
Okay.
So...
Do you see that? Okay.
So, I tried, there, it's like that on all maps except the one where it's different, a different kind of map that needed to be highlighted, so...
Okay.
Um, the other changes where it took off the railroad designation, added polyentree to all of them. And down here, we've got the public land and, uh, the multi spelled out, that was blank before.
Yep.
It was a different designation. And then added to the key planned unit development.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So, that was the changes on that.
Now, these will be in color.
No, these are black and white.
Oh, these are gonna be in black and white?
These are black and white.
Okay.
These are the originals, they were, I can't, you know?
Okay, okay.
They'd be different on each one, yeah.
So...
There's just one color one.
Okay.
The zoning.
Yeah, 'cause they are black and white in our master plan.
Yes, they are.
Yes. Mm-hmm. Okay.
Map two. Again, uh, added the lines to Rosie Court and, uh, added Frederick Lane, added Porter Lane, took off the railroad. Um, the sidewalk is covered with snow, but I think I remember that it does continue.
Okay.
So, that's drawn in that way. We've got, uh, the sidewalk in front of the fire station is now drawn in.
Okay, yep.
And down here, it said, map two existing road surface and right of ways now, instead of rights of way.
Oh, yeah.
It says right of ways.
Yay.
Okay?
Cool.
And again, I drew in the, uh, fire station property division down there and added the property next to, uh, Rosie subdivision.
Okay, okay.
Okay, map three. Added in all the property lines for Rosie Court. Added in Frederick Lane, Rosie Court, and Porter Lane's verbiage. Took off the polyentr, I mean, took off the railroad and added the polyentree. Uh, drew in the, uh, fire station property and added to the key, private road.
Yes, I see that.
And those are the ones that are dotted.
Dotted, yep.
Now, whether or not this map will change as a result of...
No, it won't. I'm almost sure it's not going to, but if it does, we'll have to correct it. We have to amend it.
And then map four. Uh, it had village hall and fire department, we just called that the village hall. We had, again, all the streets, Porter Lane, Frederick Lane, and Rosie Drive, and Rosie Court. Uh, the railroad designation's taken off, polyentree was put in, Leonard Elementary School, that was fine, the mill was fine, the post office was fine, but the village garage, maintenance building, and Blanca Trailhead was changed.
Okay.
And Village of Leonard, we added nature park. And then, we added, since we took away the fire department from it by the village hall, we put it back down where the fire department now is.
Okay.
And then, the grid for public land had to be added to the fire department's box.
Okay.
So, I did all that. Okay, then, map five. We added a pond that's in, uh, Frederick subdivision. We've got the property, the split property is in. The, um, Rosie Court had to be dotted because it was pri, um, private road.
Mm-hmm.
Frederick Lane, Porter Lane added. Uh, down here, there was potential for trail road. That's the trail.
Mm-hmm.
So, I took that out.
Okay, yeah.
And that's, uh, this trail was not, it kinda went underneath, so I made the whole trail white. See how this is?
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
This is all going through all those different colors and you can't really see it.
Yes.
So, took out the railroad designation and it goes, is solid white now.
Okay.
Okay, then this, uh, road access needed on the right bottom.
Mm-hmm.
That circle was smaller and we added, we made that circle enlarged.
Yeah, 'cause that's the bigger, the whole area.
And then I drew in, um, this, the fire station property.
Okay.
Um, anything else on this one? Pond, change, make bigger, add this here, yep, that's it. Okay. Map six. This one, um, the roads on this one, on the original, some were white, some were shaded in, so these are all white roads now. So, then, on here, you see this right here?
Mm-hmm.
This dotted line said proposed collector's street.
Oh.
That was never gonna be a street.
No, no.
That's the polyentree, so...
Okay, so you changed that, okay.
I took out this, uh, public semi-public area here and made this all dotted all the way through.
Mm-hmm.
And that's the only thing that had the Y dotted line. There's thinner dotted lines, but then I changed the key to say polyentree.
Okay, okay.
So then...
Yeah, I wonder why that was proposed collector's street?
I don't know.
It's kinda weird.
It's very strange. So, the only thing that, um, well, one of these maps has vacant land and I don't know which one of these properties has houses on it or not. We'd have to go in and actually...
Oh, yeah. Where does it say vacant land?
I didn't notice that. It'd be on like map, uh, map one. I can do that if you want me to.
I have a question.
Okay. I've got the big ones here. Which number?
I was looking at number six. I'm gonna see if it's any different here. All right, here's north. Let me figure out which way I'm going here. This is where Rosie is now. This would be Frederick. Now, they don't have it in here either.
What are you looking for?
Yeah, I was just looking on the, the, it's not really the zoning on these, it just says, um, suburban density and our property is still zoned agricultural, but that is, you know, I don't know if that's something that needs to be put on there, but now I'm looking at the old one here. Well, this is the developmental plan, so, um, they're looking to see that this is gonna become... That's what we're projecting.
Oh, for future, oh, okay.
So that, now that I'm looking at it, 'cause here you can see it too and see, we had at one time, I had written in here the PUD was gonna go in here.
Okay.
Residential one here, so that's what I saw.
Okay. Development.
We're good.
Okay. I didn't catch that either.
Yep.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
For map six?
We're good.
Any questions?
Okay.
Good job, Leslie.
Good job.
Oh, thanks, it took a long time.
Lots of work.
Okay, I'm going to, um...
Good aye.
Yeah. I'm going to make a motion that, um, at the next village council meeting, that I ask for, um, Leslie to be paid an extra, I'll let, I'll come up with a figure.
Leslie, how much do you typically make an hour?
Um, well, that's not gonna be, this is more of a donation kind of thing.
Okay.
It's, uh, I would say just enough, enough to, would be just another council meeting fee.
I was gonna say two or three.
Well, you know, I, I thought it was $55 an hour.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that's, you know, that's...
So, I'm just saying, it's money well spent for the talent that we have.
Right, so, yeah, okay. Um, I will, okay, I'm gonna make a motion to pay Leslie...
I'll second the motion.
Um...
She's thinking of an amount.
Yeah, like 150 bucks? Sound okay?
I guess, I'm, I didn't expect to be paid, but surprise.
For working on the maps?
It's been like a three-day thing, so it's, it would've been a work.
You're gonna second it?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, Lori's seconding. And can I have a roll call vote and you have to abstain?
Okay.
Do you wanna do a roll call for me?
Oh, sorry.
It's all right.
Um, all in favor?
No, you gotta call their names.
Oh, sorry, Sherri?
Yes. Okay, and you have to abstain, yes?
Uh, Lori?
Yes.
And Melissa?
Yes. Okay, so we've got one, two, three, four, yays. I put on here Leslie abstained and we got four yeses. Okay? So, I will bring that up at the village council meeting because I have to get their approval to do that, over and above just getting paid for our meetings.
Gotcha.
I have to get approval to pay her extra, which is very well deserved. So, as of right now, then, what we'll do is, these are good. And then, um, when we get the master plan corrected, then would you be giving me the copy that I would be taking to the printer?
Um, I can just, these are, uh, these are drafts, so they'll print a lot, a little bit better than this.
Okay.
I'll just print them. It's not, it only took about an hour to print all those. So, it's not, it's only six, how many copies are we gonna need?
Well, we're gonna have to have more than that because we have to have master plans upstairs too.
Mm-hmm.
So, if you were to print me out, um, a couple of copies and then...
Well, don't, aren't you gonna have everything in a PDF format to deliver to the printer and have them do it?
These are, these are JPGs.
They are JPG?
Yeah, JPGs or whatever.
I could give you the seven JPGs and they could be printed at the printer.
Okay, I'll see how Mike wants me to do it. I, when they, when they did the...
'Cause you can't photocopy them, they will not photocopy.
Oh, okay, then we're gonna have to do them that way.
They, they're just, it's too much detail, it's too fine.
Mm-hmm.
It, it's, that's the problem I'm having with your color map. You can't pick up the detail from a photocopy, you just, you lose it.
Now, when you do...
I can show you the, the downgrading of how bad it gets.
When you do the colored map, is that gonna be on a JPG too?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So then when I print that out, it'll print out fully color and bright?
Right.
Yeah, but if you provide the files to the printer...
But if you provide the files to the printer?
See, now, when we took the, um, ordinance nineteen in, I'm sure they, I'm not sure how they did it.
I'm sure they didn't run copies. I'm sure they had a file. It just makes more sense, I guess.
Who makes the books? We do? Yeah, well, we haven't printed at a printer.
A printer makes all the books all at once?
They make all our copies, and then we assemble them.
Okay.
We have to make them on the, um, three-ring, three-ring binder thing.
Right, but what'll happen, you have to, you'd have to specify in your order that the maps have to be original, not photocopied.
Yeah, well, if I can get the whole thing, you know, original, then that's how we'll do it.
Yeah, because I thought when we redid ordinance nineteen, we did, we did it in a file, so that if we needed to change anything, we can go back in and change it, and just reprint that one particular page, rather than reprinting the whole shebangal. That's why we did that binder format.
Yes, and that's what we're doing with this, too. We're doing the same thing.
So I'm sure, so I'm sure that's a file.
These are, these are in Photoshop. That's the original. So it's not like, I can, I can send them off as PDFs, I can send them off as JPGs, but in Photoshop, you have to edit in Photoshop. Printer can edit it in Photoshop, or anyone who has Photoshop, but it's not just, you know, Open Word and change it. It's a actual illustration software.
Okay. So, okay.
Yeah, it's proprietary.
It will pass. The, it's not a problem to print, this is a JPG. It prints beautiful. But if they try and photocopy that just by sticking it in a machine, it, you know, you got to print from the original file.
Right, okay.
So...
And I'm almost a hundred percent sure that I have, um, this, the zoning, or the master plan on a PDF file.
I'll bet you do.
Yeah.
You have to have a PDF editor to edit it.
Yeah, because then you can track your changes. Yep. I'll, I'm going to check, well, I'll check when I get home, now that my computer's open and running again.
You might be able to open it in Word. Can you open PDFs in Word, or you just look at it?
Yes.
Can you edit them?
Yes, yes. Yep, yeah. I just have to click on enable editing.
Okay.
Yep, so I can do that. So then I can download that onto a zip drive and take this, once this gets approved, but this is, this has to, we have to send out letters to all the surrounding communities to tell them that we're doing this master plan. They have to send us back if they don't want us to do what we've done, um, and then we have to have a, a-
Public hearing.
Public hearing for it. I mean, it's like probably four or five months down the road when I want to get this all edited.
The public hearing, does someone read it, or just present it?
No, it'll, it'll be in the paper, and it'll say there's copies of it available in the village office. Yeah, you can't print it all. It would cost us a fortune, so, but that's-
Oxford leader would be like...
So that's what has to be done. It has to go through, we have to send out letters to all the communities surrounding us, like we would have to send it to Dryden, Oxford, Addison, Washington.
Washington.
Yeah, I have a whole list of stuff. I don't think it's in this paper, but I have a whole list of stuff that has to be done in order for us to redo this master plan. So it's down the road a little ways, but, um, we'll get there. We will, so... Okay, and the update from the Village Council meeting, uh, it was just the, um, private road thing, and I will, um, once I get a, an email from Rand, I will forward that to you. It might be a week, it might be three weeks, I don't know. So I will let you know what he says. Um, okay, is there any questions? Melissa?
Oh, I'm good.
Lori? Leslie?
No questions.
Sherri?
No.
Okay. Then, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
At seven thirty?
I second.
Okay, Leslie, and second by Sherri. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're done.